Good evening, I'd like to call to order the City of Clayton Planning Commission this March 22nd, 2021. Mr. Coontz, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Pritchett? Mr. Robinson? Mr. Paulus?
Here.
Mr. Garner? And Mr. Bills?
Here. So for tonight's meeting, we'll have members of the public interested in the agenda item. So let's take some time to review the meeting procedures. Ask all members of the public keep their microphone on mute until such time as they're recognized to speak. And we will have Mr. Dorman make the staff presentation of the agenda. And after the staff presentation, we'll ask the applicant to make a presentation or add anything to what staff presented. After the applicant has completed their presentation, we'll ask Planning Commission if they have any initial questions for staff and the applicant. Then, once the commission has asked initial questions to staff and applicant, I'll ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment. Once the public comment period has started, we'll be calling on each member of the public one at a time. We ask the members of the public to raise their hand via the Zoom app. If they are unable to do that, we'll wait till we get through all of the ones that have raised their hand, and then ask for anybody else to add comment. Each person, we ask you to limit your time to three minutes. And in the interest of saving times, we'll ask that no duplicate comments are made. When it's your time to speak, please state your name and address for the record, and then you can make your comments to the Planning Commission. Do not direct your comment or specifically ask the applicant a question. The purpose of the public comment period is to help the Planning Commission understand the public's concerns, which will help us in the end of the hearing to make our recommendation to council to one of three things approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove the preliminary plan. Once the public comments have been received, I'll ask Planning Commission for a motion to close the public comment period. Once that's closed, I'll ask the applicant if they'd like to respond to any of the comments received by the public. And then, once the applicants made their comments, we'll ask Planning Commission to, one at a time, if they have any questions of the staff or the applicant. And then, once the Planning Commission has had an opportunity to ask their questions of the staff and the applicant, I'll make a motion, I'll call for a motion, sorry, for Planning Commission for one of the two recommendations to City Council. Again, it'll either be approve the preliminary development plan as submitted, approve the development plan with conditions, or disapprove the preliminary development plan. Once the motion has been made and received a second, I'll ask Mr. Coontz to please call the roll on the motion. We'll require a minimum of three ayes and the motion carries. Let's see. Thanks all to you for your interest in the agenda item tonight before us, and thank you in advance for following these rules as I set them out tonight. And for all of those in the public that wish to speak tonight for or against the agenda item, I need to administer the oath. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give to this commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, then please say I do. All right. So at this time, commissioners, you should have read the minutes of the February 22nd meeting. Does anyone have any suggested changes to the minutes of February 22nd? We don't have the right number of people that were here, so we're going to set that aside until next month.
Correct.
All right. And seeing as there is no old business, we'll move on to new business. This is case number PC21-02, parcel ID number M60031020016, Grand Tradition LLC. This is a request for review of a preliminary development plan for a single-story apartment home community. And the request was made by Grand Tradition LLC. At this time, I'd just like to note that Mr. Garner will be recusing himself from this discussion. All right, Mr. Dorman, could you please present the case for us?
Thank you, President Bills. Commissioners, good evening. So the applicant has submitted a preliminary development plan that was submitted by Grand Tradition LLC. The parcel involved is M60031020016 and is zone PD3. Parcel has a total area of 25.29 acres. The proposed development will utilize 15 of those acres. The proposed development is an apartment home community. The proposed community would contain a range of market rate apartments, anywhere from 108 to 132. That is some information that I was provided this evening by the applicant. Apartments would be single-story ranch-style homes with attached garage. Apartments would be one, two, or three-bedroom units. And access to the site would be from Hope Road. Next slide. This map in front of you is the surrounding area. I've kind of outlined in blue, you can almost see it. Next slide will be a better picture. Next slide, please. That's the subject property. So it is located to the south of Village of North Clayton. Off to the northwest, you can see the football field at the high school and middle school campus. Next slide. This is the preliminary site plan. Currently showing 23 buildings, 22 of those are the four- and six-unit apartment home buildings. Building number 23 at the front near Hope Road. And just south of one of the detention ponds is the activity center for, or the community center for the development. Next slide. So to analyze the request, I went to the guiding documents, Clayton Planning and Zoning Code. There were four chapters that were applicable to the preliminary development plan in front of you this evening. Chapter 1169, which is our planned development code. Chapter 1171, which has to do with the Clayton Improvement District Number One, which this property falls into. Chapter 1181, off-street parking and loading. Chapter 1187, supplemental district regulations. Also looked at Plan Clayton, our comprehensive land use plan. This property is part of what's called the Northmont Village. Page 41 is the regulating plan detail for the Northmont Village. And then, using the regulating plan, that's page 44 in Plan Clayton. Next slide. So, chapter 1169, Plan Development. Some things I wanted to point out regarding my review of that chapter as it relates to the plan. The construction is proposed for two phases over two years. The final development plan would be submitted if the preliminary development plan is approved. This plan will fully address utilities, stormwater runoff, landscaping, architecture, and erosion control, among other things. Parking includes attached garages. And there are spaces for guests in between the buildings and a few spaces at the activity center located in the front. Chapter 1171, Clayton Improvement District Number One. Some things I wanted to highlight from that review. The existing zoning is appropriate for the proposed use. The proposed density is 7.2 units per acre. That's at 108 units, it would go up slightly if the range increases. Remember, the range is 132 is kind of the max number of units. At 7.2 units per acre, our code defines that as medium residential density. And this density can be approved through the development plan approval process that this is currently going through. Next slide. Chapter 1187, supplemental district regulations. So the proposed buildings will be finished with a combination of vinyl siding. I say three styles, it's actually two based on the conceptual elevations that we received. And that includes a stone, also a stone water table near some of the entrances. So vinyl siding would be applied in a board and batten or vertical style, as well as horizontal lap siding on the exterior walls. And then, some of the entrances will include a stone water table detail to further help in breaking up the massing of the buildings. This is the preliminary elevations. So as you can kind of see, there are sections of board and batten, the vertical siding, and sections of the horizontal. And then, some of, as I mentioned, some of the areas of the building have the stone water table. Next slide. So the analysis of the request as it relates to Plan Clayton. Subject property is located in a planned area called Northmont Village. Plan Clayton envisions any combination of single-family attached, single-family detached, and parks. So in Plan Clayton, single-family attached is defined as single-family rowhouses, townhomes, or apartments. So we believe that this plan fits into the area known as Northmont Village in Plan Clayton. Next slide. So after review of the application and the guiding documents, we recommend that Planning Commission make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary development plan with the following condition. So that the applicant, if approved for the preliminary development plan, work closely with staff to improve upon the walkability of the proposed apartment community and provide a multi-use path along the Hope Road frontage for use not only by the residents of the proposed apartment community, but for use by the greater Clayton community as part of a planned multi-use path along Hope Road. So with that, I've got the surrounding area. I've also got slides that we can pull up for the preliminary layout and the elevations as discussion dictates. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Is the applicant present tonight? All right. Tim Hade and Brian Jimenez? Come to the podium here, state your name and address.
Thank you, I'm Brian Jimenez. Address is 941 Chatham Lane, that is Columbus, Ohio. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. Myself and my partner, Tim Hade, are very excited to present to you tonight. We certainly know a little bit and more about Clayton than you know about us. So I'd like to take that time just to briefly tell you who we are and what we do, and what we're plans and our plans to join the Clayton community. I have a few slides here that'll show up shortly.
They're having a little technical difficulty with their sharing screen.
I'd be glad to present with that.
So we're having a problem with getting the screens available in the public Zoom. We'll proceed with the meeting, and if those interested in acquiring copies of the slides may do that at a later date. We'll get it on the city's website for your review. All right.
Okay, great.
Would you like to proceed?
I'll continue on and give you a clue of where I'm at. So first of all, Grand Traditions and our affiliated companies have been developing residential communities and developments and communities for over 30 years. We are land developers, we are builders, and we are property managers. We have built custom homes, patio homes, condominiums, and apartments. So for probably the last 25 years, our focus has been in what I would call carefree lifestyle communities, and generally towards an empty nester-type population or client looking for that carefree lifestyle, low maintenance, single-floor living. And so, we spend a lot of time, a lot of expertise in that area. On the next slide, we have some of the communities that we have built, just to give you a little bit of representation and some examples. So being in central Ohio, we have, most of our communities have been in the Columbus area, but we've got a few that are on the north side of Cincinnati that are somewhat more recent. Just to point on that slide is a portion of Rivers Bend. It's a TPC golf course in Mason off of Route 75. That is a community that we purchased the ground, we developed, we coordinated it, and partnered up with the TPC for the golf course. And we are selling residential homes, and it's not too far from here. The third one down is Liberty Grand Villas. That is a condominium community on the north side of Cincinnati that's right off of Route 75, very close to the Liberty Mall that went in a few years ago. We have 122 condominiums. We're just finishing them up this year, and so certainly, we welcome anyone down that would like to take a tour. We hear there, but those are all ranch-style condominiums. And some of the pictures that we show, and will come up here a little bit later, are of that community because they somewhat emulate what we're looking to propose here in Clayton, at least in terms of the building structure and style. The other ones on here is Walker Villas. This is a community in Marysville, condominiums also, empty nesters. These are two units per building structures. And we just are finishing that up right now, actually, so. And in Tartan Fields that is shown on here, this is a single-family residential community over 650 homes. Again, we purchased the ground, we developed it in partnership with Arnold Palmer, designed the golf course around it. And from there is where we built a lot of the large custom homes and also patio homes that I referenced before. If you turn to the next slide, I represent there some of the pictures of some of the homes up in Tartan Fields. And just referencing this from our craftsman heritage, our background, our experience, and our capabilities. We have been building complex homes, large homes, in addition to smaller, empty nester-type homes. But I represent this only as the type of experience we have, quality that we bring, and we look to bring that to our community here in Clayton. And that just kind of represents some of our work. So the next slide is why do we want to be here in Clayton? I must admit, prior to, maybe three months ago, I didn't really know too much about Clayton. Tim and I did not. But what we did know is we were focusing in the greater Dayton area for, we felt there were many opportunities here. And by good fortune, a few months ago, we met David Allen and his partner, who are the owners of the property. And we knew, as soon as we arrived here, that Clayton and the surrounding area is a very special place. And we really liked what we saw. And as we explored it further, we realized there was some opportunity. And so, we were very hopeful that we can bring this forth here in Clayton. To tell you a little bit about our product, and that would then probably, I'm going to switch back to a few pages, to page eight, where we have our amenities there. It shows the center and some pictures there towards the end. As I mentioned, we're focused on an empty nester product, someone that is seeking to rent versus purchase. Someone's looking for a carefree lifestyle community and single-level, low-maintenance living. And what we know is that Clayton and the surrounding Northmont area has a lot of residents, long-term residents, that live here now and want to stay here. But the house that they're in is too large, their families have grown, they've raised them, they've moved on. Or maybe the house doesn't accommodate their needs today, and they're looking for that single-floor, no-step-type ranch community. Or possibly, their resources, instead of being in a purchased home, is used elsewhere for retirement, and they want to have a place to live, but they want to stay here. And it's going to be so important for Clayton to embrace that because you want your long-term residents to want to stay. They want to stay, they're the ones supported, the schools, the children, the activities, the local stores. You don't want to lose them to other communities just because you don't have a place for them to go. So Tim and I really feel like we're bringing that opportunity to help keep that buyer, that person, that resident in your community. So, and by the way, we're not exclusively for an empty nester-type resident. We'll find that we'll have some younger folks also, maybe just getting started. There may be folks that want to move into the area and they need a house temporarily or a place to stay temporarily. But the other thing that, not only are you trying to maintain your residents, your current population, but you're going to entice new folks to come in. Because what we find with our lifestyle product, so many grandparents are trying to move where their grandchildren are. And you have people that live here now that have grandparents that would want to come here. But they have to have the product to be able to, you know, live comfortably. So I think it's going to be something that only helps you to maintain and retain your valued residents, but also embrace bringing new ones into the community. And so, that's why we're here. Obviously, we're here for a business opportunity. We see that the market has that void here, and we feel like we have a wonderful opportunity on the piece of ground, very close to a very exciting area, growing area Clayton, and we want to be a part of it, you know. We would like to be a part of your community, to be an owner here, to have local management here, and to really contribute for many, many years to come. Now that we see some of the slides popping up here, I do want to reference a few key things on the amenities that I kind of glossed over. And I wanted to point out the fact that we do have an activity center that is part of our plan. And again, we want to have a place for our residents to gather, to socialize, to be a part of that community with it. Will also be some outdoor connectivity. It was mentioned earlier that that was being recommended, and we embrace that also. We know that to the north of us is a community that hasn't been fully planned or laid out yet, but we embrace the opportunity to get up into that space. And I think we're talking also about some walkways out on Hope Road, too, so. A real key part of our architecture, and as we said, that slide comes up a little bit further, and we're getting close to having it all on the screen, is our building structure is such that all the garages are interior to the building. So when you drive down the street, your streetscape is trees and grass, green. It's not a lot of driveways and garage doors. And so, our project down in Liberty Township that I was referencing earlier, Liberty Grand Villas, is set up the same way. Those buildings have the garages on the interior, and therefore, when you go down the street, you're seeing a real nice green entryway. You're not just seeing a lot of blacktop or concrete and that. And so, that's kind of a key differentiation that we designed into our product because we feel it really embraces the community of what people want to see as they come into a community. Thank you for your time tonight. I hope you know a little bit more about us, a little bit of what we do, and certainly available for any questions, so.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff or the applicant?
None, none for me. Sorry, Seth Paulus, no questions for me.
Thank you, Seth. Sabrina, Ricky? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
So I will accept a motion and a second to open the floor to public comment at this time.
I'd like to make a motion that we hope for, for a public comment.
Second, Seth Paulus, second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, that's my other board procedure. Jack, you call the roll.
Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
So for any members of the public wanting to join in on the Zoom meeting, I'd like to remind each of you, you have three minutes. You state your name and address for the record and make your comment. And try not to repeat any comments from ones that are previously made. Finally, we're asking you to not direct your, any questions directly to the applicant or the staff, but rather... but rather to state your opinion as to your support or any other comments you have concerning the development. So if anybody wants to make a comment, please raise your hand on the Zoom application. If you're unable to do that, we'll wait for opportunity at the end to make your comment. We'll ask anyone who is not at a chance to speak to unmute and introduce themselves at that time. Do we have anyone with a hand up?
Okay, John Lince has raised his hand, John.
Hi, guys. My name is John Lince. I am at 4754 Mollynot Lane. We are the last house that you would see on Mollynot in the village of North Clayton. We have a couple of concerns that we'd like to raise. In general, it does appear that this will be a, a well-done community, but there are a couple of concerns that we have. One of them is the possible runoff concerns with the, the creek that runs directly behind our house. When it rains, the stream tends to get pretty, pretty high. And we are a little bit concerned with what that might mean, with the development down there, what that might mean for flooding concerns for us in all of the houses here on Mollynot Lane that back up to the, the creek. And then the, the major concern is with traffic. If you are going to add hundreds of people in this development, as well as hundreds that will be in the new apartments that Windsor is building in the village of North Clayton, that's going to be a large, large increase in people who will be, you know, going and, and coming on, on Hope Road, which is a one-lane or two-lane street. I hope that the, the city has some sort of idea of how to accommodate that because when you have hundreds of new people, maybe a thousand new people, when, when the village of North Clayton is, is finished, you know, that, how is Hope going to be able to handle that? I think that's going to be a, a major issue. And we would recommend that the commission here recommend a traffic study. I know that was supposed to have been done with the plan that was shot down in front of the high school a little bit ago and was never finished. So I think it'd be a good idea to do a traffic study to see what kind of impact these hundreds of new people will have on Hope Road and then National Road. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Do we have anyone else with a hand up? Are we, are we able to see everybody that's in attendance from the public side at this point? For anyone who's unable to raise their hand, if they would like to unmute them, unmute their mic and speak at this time? All right, here are no other comments. Mr. Hyde, Mr. Jimenez, would you like to respond to any of those comments?
Tim Hyde, Grand Tradition Homes. Just wanted to, um... Okay. I just wanted to response, respond to Mr. Lince. Quite often we do hear of drainage issues in and around new developments. And we hear your concern. I'm a little bit unfamiliar with the location of, of this creek or which creek exactly. There's a couple in the area, so we will go ahead. We will definitely, with our certified engineer, take a look at this creek runoff. And certainly, this is take, this is looked at in the process of our final plat. As far as traffic concerns, it's been tr- tried and true. We've looked at all of our communities that we have empty nest residents or those that are retired. And the traffic concerns on the major roads, these aren't the normal high-velocity times of traffic in the morning and the afternoon rush hours, per se. These folks will either be earlier or later. But these, our, our residents and our demographic tries to avoid, avoid this time of day at all possible. So the actual traffic impact on our communities is very low for their surrounding streets.
All right, thank you. Did we have somebody else join, or we closed the public hearing, or? No other comments?
I do have one more comment.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
This would be one more comment, can you hear me?
Yes, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yep, this is Scott Fraser. I'm at 4976 Steineman Street in the village of North Clayton. I'm also the, the president of the North Clayton Owners Association. And I, the only other comment that I have is, one, I, I would, this looks like a, a well-designed, quality project. So from my point of view, I, I would welcome it. I had one concern, and that's how this interfaces with Windsor's planned development of the village of North Clayton. From preliminary discussions, they, they considered that there would be an access into the village that would come in off of Hope Road as well. And it seemed to me that that was going to be in parallel or about the, the same location as the access into this new, new planned area. And so my, I guess my concern is whether that, how that, how that planning between Grand Traditions and Windsor is, are they coordinating in any way? The access into the village of North Clayton, planned development, and, and this, this new planned area. So if that makes some sense. Again, it's, it's, it goes, it dovetails a bit with John Lince's comment, but really question how, how this, how this will interface with the planned access into the, the rear part of the village of North Clayton, seems to parallel this plan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fraser. Are there, is there anyone else from the public that wants to comment? I, I did not close the public hearing yet. I don't believe we did. Is there anybody else that wants to make a comment before we respond to Mr. Fraser's? All right, I would ask for a motion in a second to close the floor to public comment at this time.
I'll make a motion that we close the public comment.
Seth Paulus, second.
So Seth, help me out here, does this require a vote, or is it? Yes, okay, so Mr. Koontz, please.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
So again, I'll, I'll ask the applicants if there's, if they want to respond to that question for the last comment, then.
Okay, here we go, Brian Jimenez to respond. So we are not, we have not yet received any information from Windsor on, on their plans to the north. We have been in contact with them on multiple, multiple occasions, so. But certainly, we're going to be open to trying to coordinate where we can, if it makes sense, once we see what they're, what they're proposing.
And, and anything in regards to traffic?
Oh, the only thing on the traffic thing, as Tim mentioned earlier, I'm just going to reemphasize that, is certainly that the main concern with traffic is usually the rush hour times of the day. And the majority of our clientele is, is really trying to schedule around that. They're going to be coming out maybe, certainly not at the seven, eight o'clock timeframe. They're going to see, you'll see them exiting and, and coming and going around 9:30, 10 o'clock. They're generally trying to be back in earlier. And, and, and so even though that traffic will be, there are a number of cars will be going out. It won't be in, it generally is not at the same timeframe as what we would normally call a rush hour, a very active time of day. So, yeah, that's all I can say, Mike and I.
All right, thank you.
I do have one quick question. Do, do you plan, I'm sorry, do you plan to lease any new units prior to they're all completed? Will you, will you lease as they're done, or you'll wait to have a grand opening and lease? Or you'll have, you'll have a certain number completed and you're going to lease?
Yeah, so we're still working through our strategy on that. What we do feel at this point in time, it'll be a two-phase project, so we'll probably do about half the units initially. But as we complete those buildings, I think our plan would be, after we have a, a number of buildings completed, we'd be to start renting or allowing residents to move in versus waiting till the full completion. But that's still an internal decision that's going to be made. But we will definitely get one phase done before we will then enter into the second phase.
So based on that, how much landscaping will you have done, your landscaping and that? Will you, will you wait and have, as you, as you phase in the folks, and then you wait to complete and do your, your, your curb appeal kind of thing that you spoke about? Or you'll do it in one shot?
I think what, very good question. Certainly, we're going to be trying to put our marketing best foot forward. And so the front entryway, that whole area, would most likely be our first phase. And where our attention will go, certainly immediately. We wouldn't look to probably do any landscaping on the second phase until those buildings were up and running. It just wouldn't make sense, but, so I would say, to just generally answer your question, we'll landscape as we, as we complete the buildings. But the front entryway is where our community building is being proposed. We certainly want that standing tall as early as we can and have that whole front area looking nice, so. So that will be landscaped and sodded and, and planted.
Yeah, because that's like a marketing tool, too.
It's very much a marketing, that's right. That's our front door. So you only get one chance to make a good impression, and we want to make it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
If, I may, very quickly, so in terms of Mr. Fraser's question, with Grand Traditions coordinating with Windsor, from a staff's perspective, what I wanted to pass along is that we have had conversations with Windsor about this project, about this project. And what Windsor told us is that they've been having very good conversations with Grand Traditions and that they're going to coordinate with them however they need to in order to make sure that both projects are as, as successful as possible. And they didn't see any issues with working with Grand Traditions because all their conversations have been so positive at this point. But I do know from a staff perspective, Windsor does seem pretty happy with where Grand Traditions is at and where their conversations have been in terms of coordination. So I just wanted to pass that along.
All right, thank you, Mr. Koontz. Ms. Pritchett, do you have any questions for staff?
Not at this time.
Mr. Robinson?
The only thing I have is, so when you say that staff has been in contact with the two developers, does that mean that at, at any given time or once the project starts, that you're looking at to have the project managers kind of meet? And, because that's where that, that communication will fall in, is the two, whoever's going to be that site manager, that's who's going to really coordinate and make things happen. Because, you know, they're not going to come to the city every minute when something they need to do. So I think the project managers, that meet and greet would probably help a whole lot, whoever that may be.
Thank you, Ricky, good point.
So Seth, I have a, a couple of questions. This is zoned appropriately, this is not a zoning change, correct?
That's correct.
And, and the density they're proposing, is that in keeping with the zoning category that it's in?
Yeah, so it's, it's in a planned development. And planned developments, the plan that is ultimately approved by a planning commission and city council will establish the density, so yes, it's in keeping.
And then to the previous question from the public about tie-in to the village of North Clayton, well, first of all, let me ask, where is the Windsor property relative to this one?
Okay, so if you're looking at the, and I don't know if you can see, but if you can see the blue outline, which is the proposed property for Grand Traditions, if you go north, so it's just the, the property to the north of this one, and you can see where some of the plating has already occurred in, in the home building, that is the village of North Clayton. So this is just to the south. And I guess to kind of dovetail on what Jack said, and in response to Mr. Fraser's question, the applicant is proposing access from Hope Road. At this time, they're showing no direct connection, from a road standpoint, no direct connection to the village of North Clayton.
That was going to be my next question. I didn't see anything indicated on the drawings to, to indicate that, so.
Correct.
And let me ask another question, there was mention of a traffic study. When is the appropriate time in the planning and zoning process for that?
So the appropriate time, and I've, I've had a brief discussion in passing with the applicant about this, but the appropriate time is for the, at the final development plan. And the intent of that would be to look at the impact of the specific development on the, on the roadways that it surrounds and it impacts. So, you know, to Mr. Lince's point, I think he was concerned about both National and Hope. This will look at Hope Road and, and the surrounding area, and that'll be done by a professional engineer, and that will be reviewed by our professional engineer as well, the city's, just, just to verify the, the information and make sure that the, the impact of the proposed development will be mitigated from a traffic standpoint.
All right, thank you, and Mr. Robinson?
So I just want to piggyback on that traffic issue. So as you, based on the development that's going to really take place, have, have you actually started looking at some of the plans that's being proposed for the additional housing stock that, that will take place in Clayton? So I think their plan will finish up in two years, a lot of these will finish up in two years. So based on that particular time, are you seeking to have a plan done within the next 12 months? And if so, then are you looking for county funding and things of that nature? Because when you start doing that, and then transportation money, so, you know, there's probably a two-year down the road to get all that done and, and get it approved. So actually, when most of the... So actually, when most of the projects are complete, there's, there's, there's going to be some road improvements, some upgrades to the infrastructure in the roads to, to do it opposed to, once they're completed, and then two years down the road, people are coming to, coming to the board complaining, saying, hey, the traffic on Hope is just terrible.
Yes, I think as each development comes forward, we, we ask for a traffic study in order for that developer to make whatever road improvements are necessary to mitigate their, their specific impact. At the same time, the city of Clayton does have a capital improvements program, and so we're always looking for grants and monies to help us with kind of our long-term road, road improvement projects. Hope Road is on that list, so obviously, that's an important road to us as well. But as each development comes forward, the traffic study will look at that specific impact.
All right. Any other questions from the commission? All right, at, at this time, I'll ask for a motion in a second to make recommendation for approval, approval with conditions, or to disapprove the preliminary development plan?
I'll make a motion to approve said plan without conditions.
Seth Paulus, a second to that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Coons, can you call the roll?
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulus?
Yes.
Mr. Bills?
Yes. In our, in our last month's meeting, there was discussion about why we judged, made a decision the way we did, and I think a couple of things, one thing worth noting is that this is a recommendation to council. Council makes the final decision as to the next step in this process. And then if there's anybody of the commission that wants to indicate for the record what factors played in your decision on this, I think that would help the public, general public understand our thinking process in this.
I, I would like to make some comments. I had actually reviewed the proposal. One of the things I think that is very important to say is that the Grand Traditions community, I think, really offers a community setting that is similar to the look and feel of Clayton residential properties and, and single-family homes. One of the things that I've seen is some of our senior residents or couples that are downsizing are moving out of the area. They're going south and southeast, we, because we do not have these type of properties that are in Clayton, and that is an economic loss to our city and to our area. Also, potentially, we have a community that is lacking the flavor and interest of these individuals that can bring. And so I think it's very important that, we also know that professional individuals are choosing not to own properties at this time, and they're wanting to have high-end rental homes. And so we don't want to lose them to our neighboring communities, and especially as they're going south, southeast, Centerville, Beaver Creek. So because of the aesthetics and amenities offered from upscale planned apartment living, and more importantly, this aligns with our planned Clayton. So I think that we should really look that this would add to the thriving area for city, for the city of Clayton, and, and just add, I think, something very attractive for people to really say, let's take a look at Clayton, and let's come to Clayton, so that we're not losing these people. So I really hope that this is something that we move forward.
Mr. Robinson, nothing to add? All right. Let's see. Mr. Powell?
Sorry, Seth Paulus, do you have anything to add?
No, I think Sabrina summed it up very well.
Thank you.
All right. So the Plan Commission has recommended, recommended the city council that they approve the preliminary development plan as, as submitted. The second item on the agenda for tonight was to review the recommendation of the zoning code update. Mr. Dorman, you're requesting a change to this agenda item at this time to table it?
Yeah, that, that, that's correct. So we are looking at a change to remove the North Clayton district back to, which is the village of North Clayton, back to, or, or keep it as a planned development, which is what it is today. It has a strong development standards tag, so we'd like to keep it as a planned development. In addition, we're working with the consultant on kind of finalizing some additional changes. So we would just ask that you would table it, and within a month or two, we'd like to be back in front of you with the final review.
Yes, so I'll entertain a motion in a second to table the Plan Commission's review and recommendation on the zoning code update. Mr. Coons, may you please call the roll for the vote?
I'll make a motion that we table the zoning code update to a later date.
I second that. Seth Paulus?
All right, so now we have a motion in a second. Mr. Coons, may you call the roll for the vote?
Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
Mr. Bills?
Aye. Next Plan Commission meeting is to be determined, correct, Seth?
That, that's correct. At this time, we don't have any applications to review.
All right, so I will now accept the motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second, Seth Paulus?
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, the motion for adjourned, adjourned signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.